All right, we will call the regular meeting of October fourteenth, two thousand twenty five to order if we can stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the principle for the liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mr. Douglas.
Here.
Ms. Hayes.
Here.
Mr. Horvath.
Here.
Mrs. Sensen.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
All members are present.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move. My second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Ms. Hayes.
Yes.
Mr. Horvath.
Yes.
Mrs. Sensen.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Kerry's four zero extension.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September thirtieth, two thousand twenty five?
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Ms. Hayes.
Abstain.
Mr. Horvath.
Yes.
Mrs. Sensen.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Kerry's four zero extension.
Looking on the board reports, I'll start this evening. We're gonna have a moment of silence. It's always sad to learn of someone's passing, especially when it is a member of our Madison family. Recently, we learned of the passing of Karen Battis, a retired Spanish teacher for the Madison local school district. Karen was born on July eleventh, nineteen forty nine, in Cleveland, Ohio, and passed away on October seventh, two thousand twenty five. Karen was a beloved Spanish teacher to her students in Madison for thirty three years. She was a proud alumnus of Charles F. Brush High School, class of sixty seven. She graduated from Ohio University in nineteen seventy one and loved every minute there. Karen will be known for her infectious laugh and generous heart. In her retirement, she enjoyed quilting. She loved to gift her completed quilts to her friends. Karen will be missed by her son Ed, stepchildren William Battis and Connie Wilson. She was preceded in death by her husband William, stepson Robert, and her parents. She also was a proud dog owner of May. All of us in Madison schools extend our deepest and most sincere sympathy to Karen's family and friends. Karen was my Spanish teacher in high school. I took three years and she was a wonderful teacher. We were friends after high school and, you know, as part of her class when her husband passed away. And to see the class rally around her was really, really something to see back then. And that infectious laugh certainly was something to be, to be noted. Anyone else wishing to give a report this evening?
Yes, I, and you may have talked about it at the September thirtieth. No, it was after that, so Jeff had organized representative, state representative Jamie Callender to come out and for the high school. Meet with Mr. Rambler, myself, principal Nysley, Mr. Bull, and fortunately, we also were lucky enough. Jen was there. I was like, I'm sorry, Jen, I apologize. But also, it was, we were lucky that when we were outside looking at all of the ecology stuff that they're doing at the high school, Mr. Peer was there as well as our Spanish teacher. And so we discussed with him various different things going on within Madison schools. And obviously, you know, finances were certainly brought up, but also a lot of the good things. And he seemed very willing to hear more about what we need. Indicated that his office is willing to help us. And also give us, gave us some direction of some, some things to reach out to as far as AWT and things of that nature. So I felt that it was, it was a good meeting. I, I really enjoyed it and thank you very much, Jeff, for setting that up for us. I appreciate it.
It took me, of course, I tried last year and then again in the spring, but, you know, trying to lock these people in or it's just very hard. But it took us a while, but I'm glad it happened and everything.
Right, well, and because we're not the only district that he has, I'm sure that he has visited. And when he left us, he was going to visit Rabbit Run. But I know that, you know, I have spoke with Governor DeWine. Prior to being Governor DeWine, he was the Attorney General at the time. I spoke with him a few times, actually. And as well as Senator Eklund. And I know that Jeff has spoken, I want to say it was David Joyce, was it not?
I had Jerry Sereno out last year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, you know, it, it's, it's always good to try and build and maintain relationships with your state representatives because at some point, hopefully, something you say they will want to hear more about or, you know, something that you say will resonate with them and they understand that, you know, what we need. I did want to say real quick before we move on, there was some misinterpretation about our meeting tonight about the dates. I had heard that, you know, we were, it's been said that we at the last minute changed this date. We needed to change the date of this meeting. It was essential for the five-year forecast. And we spoke about it, I thought it was two meetings ago, but it may have just been at the last meeting. And then on October first, we actually updated the date of this meeting on our website as well. So we did not by any means purposely try to, you know, pull a fast one with the change in the date here. So that's all.
Dan and myself and Michelle and I'm hoping Bob, our principal of the high school, will be attending for all pass, the manufacturers company that's by the railroad tracks. And they do have over tanks for, one of the robotics team, which is here tonight, do meet there, you know, and they've got a supporter. But we're working to see how much more support we can get in there, find out what their needs are. We just had the same meeting at GL Power a couple of weeks ago. We're working to, with other businesses. We have a lot of great restaurants and places that really provide for the community and for our schools, but it, it's nice that we're able to finally tap into some of these manufacturing places and seeing how we could work with them. And I think our next one after that is the nurseries, Special Petites. You know, if we can get in there, you know, because they are such a, a big place and I think that's our next, you know, after these ones that we're gonna be reaching out to.
Well, you know, I think Brian, haven't you reached out to Petites in the past? Because Brian has really felt strongly about Petites Nursery there.
Yeah, we had momentum that died off, but it'd be great to pick it back up again.
Anyone else wishing to give a report this evening?
Yeah, on October twentieth, is it the National League Women Voters?
Yes, it's just the League of Women Voters.
Are having a meet the candidate night. Is it in Perry?
It is, at the community center.
For the trustees and board members of Perry and Madison. And it'll give everyone an opportunity to meet the candidates and for the candidates to speak for themselves, so it'll be a good opportunity for those folks to meet.
All right, we don't have anyone registered to public participation, so reports and recommendations of the treasurer.
Thank you. My first item is a resolution to approve financial statements for the month of September twenty twenty five. In summary fashion, the general fund through September had revenues of nine million, six hundred and five thousand dollars, expenditures of eight million, nine hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, and an ending fund balance of two million, five hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. This compares to September of last year where we had revenues of nine million, four hundred and fifteen thousand, expenditures of six million, seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand, and an ending fund balance last September of five million, two hundred and one thousand dollars. You have several financial statements I submitted to the board and I recommend approval.
I'll move. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Ms. Hayes.
Yes.
Mr. Horvath.
Yes.
Mrs. Sensen.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Kerry's five zero. Alice, Mr. President, should I ask to get this on the floor? May I speak to the forecast?
Sure.
Okay, I recommend approval of the financial forecast.
Second.
All right. Okay. As I mentioned in my communication to the board yesterday, well, first of all, just to dovetail what Ms. Hayes was saying, I, I appreciate the board changing the date of this meeting. Recently, the state changed the due date of our forecast from the end of November to October fifteenth. So that's why we had to move the board date to the day so we can get it in within the deadline. I appreciate the board being flexible in that. But as I mentioned my communication to you last night, this forecast, since the May forecast, I'm afraid it's taken a turn for the worse due to unforeseen circumstances that happened after May. And I talked a little bit about this during the appropriation discussion. Those areas are the state foundation and health insurance. I'll get a little bit more into, into those in a little bit. But the May forecast did show us ending each fiscal year with a positive fund balance through the fiscal twenty seven, twenty eight year. With these two changes that we had to put into this forecast, we're going to have some work to do to end this year with a positive fund balance at the end of the year. And I will get into that a little bit more. But just looking briefly at our main revenue sources, obviously, the board knows two main revenue sources. Our local property taxes and our state funding. Property taxes make up about forty-two percent of our revenue, state funding about fifty-four percent. And then the other four percent are miscellaneous things such as interest earnings, tuition collections, building rentals and those kind of things. Specifically, local real estates are estimated to be eleven point six five million this year.
So, is it local revenues? I mean, what did you just say, local?
The, the, the other, the local.
Yeah.
Four percent.
Okay.
Yeah. Those are individually, they're immaterial compared to our, our main sources, but those are mostly local collections of interest, student fees, building rentals and those kind of things. Real estate taxes are estimated to be eleven point six five million this year. And as, as the board knows, real estate is, is fairly fixed due to household nine twenty, the reduction factor. Whereas property values increase, the, the effective millage is lower so that the, we still we see the same amount of taxes as we did in the first year of any eleven. One exception to that is, is in the inside village, which is a small amount. There is some inflationary movement with that. But basically, we're fixed and in fact, through fiscal thirty, you know, we're, we're looking at small incremental rises from essentially eleven point seven. small incremental rises from essentially eleven point seven million to twelve point five million by fiscal twenty-nine thirty. Public utility taxes are pretty much the same. We're estimated, estimating one, one million, thirty thousand dollars this year. And, uh, again, small incremental increases to one point two million dollars in fiscal thirty. Okay, the state foundation, um, the, the base funding formula uh, is, is where our first main issue lies. Last year, our unrestricted state foundation totaled fourteen point two million dollars. This year it's estimated to be thirteen point six million dollars or a six hundred thousand dollars decrease. Back in May, the assumption in the forecast, uh, used the current funding bill that was being proposed at the time. As, as we all know, uh, last year, the, the legislator worked, legislature worked on the funding bill for the next biennium. They had at the point in May where the forecast was done, the House bill was the latest bill. And the bill included a guarantee, um, for many districts, including ours. Basically saying that we guaranteed as least as much money as we received in fiscal twenty-five, we would continue to receive. By the end, when the final bill was passed, that guarantee was gone. So that put us back on the formula. And due most of the fact that we've had declining enrollment, the way the formula numbers worked. And, um, corresponding decrease in the state share of the formula that caused the calculation to, uh, reduce our funding by that six hundred thousand dollars. So, uh, that was a big hit that, um, was not being counted on back in May. Overall, total revenue is expected to remain about the same this year as last year at about thirty million dollars. Moving forward this year, there's only a slight increase, uh, which turns out to be zero point eight three percent. Because basically we're, uh, our, our, we're on fixed income. Yes, as, as the board knows. Possibly some change in state funding may occur in future biennium, but I don't think we can assume that in, in our forecast. So, um, our revenues will basically remain the same over the next five years. Expenditures are obviously a, a different story. Um, as the board knows, approximately eighty-two percent of our budget is in personnel between salaries and benefits. Purchase services, uh, which include utilities, tuition, transportation is about fifteen percent of our budget. Materials and supplies and other expenses coming in at about three percent of our, our total budget. Uh, in regard to salaries. As I mentioned in the appropriation, uh, discussion. Employees are getting a two percent cost of living increase this year. And their normal years of service debt movement, uh, costs about one point seven percent, making for three point seven percent. However, there is a reduction in staffing, uh, compared to, uh, I believe about five staff members. So we're only showing about a zero point six percent increase this year in, in salaries. From seventeen point seven million last year to seventeen point eight million dollars this year. Our other problem child is in the benefits area. Again, medical insurance. Again, this all occurred after the May forecast. We were hit with an assessment from our healthcare consortium of four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That was paid in August. And we are about to, um, see nineteen point two percent increase in premiums in January. With that, uh, it's causing our benefits to increase from seven million dollars last year to eight point one million dollars this year. About fifteen point eight percent increase. Fifteen point eight percent increase. Okay, now the, uh, next two categories. I'll have to say that I went through, you know, we typically have inflation factors built in. Um, or if any major changes, you know, we include that. But in order to, uh, end up with a very small positive fund balance this year. I had to make some assumptions that we would reduce some discretionary spending this year. And I don't know where, all I know is we, you know, once the year begins, salaries and benefits are in place. There's not much we can do about it. In purchase services, we do have some flexibility, some discretionary, uh, spending built in, although the majority of purchase services, I'm afraid is not discretionary. Again, we're talking about tuition, transportation, uh, utilities, those kinds of things. But there are some areas we can reduce. So in total, um, we're looking at a two percent increase from last year, typically at any given year. That area due to tuition and, and utilities, it could be a little bit more than two percent. But I pulled it back to two percent. So we're looking at going from four point seven seven million in fiscal twenty-five to four point eight seven million dollars in fiscal twenty-six. Again, a two percent increase. The materials and supplies, unfortunately, this is the area where we have most discretion. So this is the area where at least in this forecast, I cut back. We spent eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars in fiscal twenty-five. This year I'm showing spending seven hundred and five thousand dollars. Or about a decrease of hundred twenty-two thousand dollars. And I know, obviously Dan and I have talked and, and as leadership, we will be getting together and start making plans about this year and, uh, start talking about, uh, future things. But, um, in total, expenditures are expecting to rise from thirty point eight million in fiscal twenty-five to thirty-one point eight million dollars in fiscal twenty-six. Beyond that, um, I really didn't make any changes. I just worked off these numbers. And, you know, assuming the same level of servicing, staffing and everything. And that's showing about on average a two point five percent, two point five, six percent increase. Through out those years. And I'm afraid, you know, to fix them come like we are. I'm afraid that's not sustainable. So, um, I will bring your attention to the last page on the handout. We have three years of history. And, uh, if you can go down the line six point zero one. This in my mind is the most important line of the whole forecast. This shows whether we're operating at a surplus or deficit. We've been operating at a deficit the last three years. And that was known. That's just the way school funding is. Gas will let you build up a balance and then you, you work off that balance. But we have in deficit spending and will continue to do so. And then for this year, again, the fiscal twenty-six year on line seven point zero, seven point zero two. The ending cash balance is showing at only forty-one thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars. So, uh, it is really tight this year and, um, we have to be able to, you have to, you know, stay on top of things and, and work. So that I'd be happy to answer questions or Mr. Reivers and comments to make.
Yes. Yeah, if I could, and, well, this, um, firstly, I think it's important for everybody to know that. I guess I'd start with, you know, I, obviously I haven't been here long. I've had a great opportunity though to get to know the district, get to learn a lot about the district, been able to review an incredible amount, work with, um, strong leadership team with Dave and Jen and that are building leaders, which we have a meeting today and they're pretty phenomenal individuals and it's a great team. And the same thing I, I want to say about the board, it's a great board that has done a lot of work over a period of time to continue to right-size the district and make really difficult decisions. To align our resources, you know, the district that struck as Steve had mentioned. With declining enrollment, enrollment is funding. And we are really heavily reliant on the state for funding for the district. I think Steve had mentioned, we get about fifty-four percent of our revenue from the state and forty-two percent comes from local levies. Conversely, state average for districts across the entire state is thirty-six point three percent comes from the state. Forty-nine point two percent comes from local funds. It's important to know because the state budget is dictated by the individuals in Columbus and they can change it every time that there's a budget cycle. And the changes they made really impacted Madison this year. With how they changed the funding formula and changed, uh, the guarantee of how schools will be funded. And that's, it's hard for schools to live that way, to live in a way that funding changes radically like that because we, you know, obviously the vast majority of our funds are used for staffing. And which I, I will never, um, be one to say that that's wrong. That absolutely should be how schools are funded. We're a people business. You know, our, we're fortunate. We have an amazing staff in Madison and they work really hard with our kids and, um, we are very fortunate to have the staff that we have that works with our kids and we absolutely want to invest in them. I think that that's a huge part. The other part I would combine with that is that the board, as I was saying, they've done a really good job over the years of being really steadfastly committed to, we're gonna invest in that which is most important within a school. Which is the growth, the achievement of kids. And that happens within the classroom. That's why our funding is really focused in that area is how do we support the classroom? How do we make sure we have the right staff to impact our kids? Based on all the unique attributes and needs that our kids have. How do we do that? And I think that the board is continually really focused on that and worked hard at that. To try to continually come back to that point and not be swayed in different directions, which is really a challenge. And I, I commend the board and I thank the board for doing that. That's really, really hard work. When we're struck with the financial challenges we have. I, I also really appreciate their responsible approach to it, you know, financial management. It's really hard. And I think all of us, over the course of time, there's been so much fluctuation and costs. And I think every person has felt that, you know, with eggs being ridiculous prices for a while and like, you know, the same, same thing with, you know, gas utilities. I know everybody who pays for utilities is struck by that in their house. It's the same thing with the school, you know, those costs have dramatically changed and increased. But I think that, I don't think, I absolutely know that the board is making the right decisions to impact students at the classroom local level, which I think is really valuable. Those are going to be the hard decisions we have to make because I would continue to, to argue that that's what we have to do. You know, as, as Steve had mentioned, and as we work together to identify potential areas for the short term, which is this year. But then for the long term, uh, how do we continue to balance the budget and really set up the district for years of prosper, prosperity and, and the support of students. It's really looking at, what are those decisions do we make? You know, an easy answer could always be, you know, staffing is your largest percentage. Why don't you look at staffing? I would argue, and I think that the board has shown that they would argue that they know that that is the most important thing with our kids is in the classroom, the staffing, the opportunities we provide for kids. So I think that that should not be our singular focus. Um, our class sizes are large. I go to it. I go into a lot of classrooms and I have yet to go into a classroom where I've thought, oh, there's so few kids here. There's all this room. And I'm one that counts kids when I go in the classrooms. And I would tell you that twenty-five to seven, twenty-seven kids is very, very normal. Whether you're talking about kindergarten or twelfth grade, that is a normal number. So I don't think that's where our long-term impact is going to come from. It's going to have to be some other things. And I think they're going to be difficult decisions. I've already started to try to identify some different areas that I think the board should talk about, consider. You know, I appreciate, while, while I'm frustrated, the state has made the changes to the finances and I frustrated that they've made the changes to the forecast process. I'm also appreciative that I have a couple of meetings coming up with the community at the library to be able to talk about school financing because I think the community needs to be very well informed. And I think that, you know, that's something that the board has talked to me a lot about as I came into my position. Of really communicating with the community and really listening to the community. So I think that will be really important. The other thing I would mention is the enrollment trends, you know, I, I, um, I like data. I actually like finances and numbers and I probably am overly attentive at times to that. When you look for Lake County, there is a decrease in enrollment. That's the norm of districts in Lake County. And it's not a complaint. It's just identifying what is the reality of it. I was recently in a superintendent meeting with, um, Lake County Superintendent. And the vast majority of districts said the same thing. We're losing kids. We're not losing kids to other districts. We're losing kids because there are not as many kids being born in Lake County. And you can actually see that too, because I looked at the births within Lake County and there has been a decline for over fifteen years. And that's just a fact. And it means there's going to be fewer kids that come into the district. You can see it in our enrollment numbers when you look at our kindergarten, first second grade levels. Because they become your high school kids down the line. You can see that with our, in our enrollment for twenty years, we have had a steady decline in the district. And again, it's not unique to Madison. I have analyzed the numbers and pulled the numbers of how many kids open a roll? How many kids open and roll out of the district? How many kids homeschool? How many kids take an ed choice? We have on average, in the last five years, between two hundred and ten and two hundred and eighty kids who open a roll into the district. On average, we have between fifty-five and fifty-nine that open a roll out. So kids want to come, like families want their kids to come here. And that says a lot. That's fifty-five to fifty-nine. That says a lot about our district that people are choosing to come here. Of course, there are people that are homeschooling our kids. That is a, a normal choice that I think people make everywhere throughout the nation. And we have some kids that are taking advantage of ed choice and, uh, attending private schools. But it's not that we're losing kids. It's less kids are being born in Lake County. That is very important, as Steve was mentioning, because again, our funding is so heavily reliant on the state. Our number of kids that we have within the district impacts our funding. Because they look at how many kids do you have and they determine the funding based on the number of kids. So that's something that as we go, we have to keep being attentive to the number of our kids and our, our finances because we want to be responsible to our community. I know from talking to, I'm sorry. I know from talking to, I'm sorry, I'm going on for quite a bit, is that okay?
No, go ahead, this is very important, I think the community definitely needs to.
I um, I've talked to a lot of people in the community, one of the things that I often hear is. Are you gonna try to pass a levy? That's a conversation I hear a lot. And I don't, I didn't say any of this stuff to talk about a levy at all, because I I don't think that is the answer, right? The answer is, we've gotta continue to figure out of, how do we continue to balance our budget? Right-size the district and really plan for the future. Because I think there are potential options for the near term, but then that could also help us for the long term. I think, I think in general, communities are worn out by levies too, and I think that's something that we as a district and we as a board. Them as a board have to be considerate of to examine those questions, but. I don't think that the levy answer is the right answer. I think it's an answer to consider, but I think that it's continuing to look at. How do we make those difficult choices to right-size the district, balance the budget and invest within our kids? Which really is trying to prioritize the teacher-student relationship and staff-student relationship within the classroom. Which, which is hard, those are hard decisions to make, those are really hard decisions. And that, that's gonna be our process moving forward, our leadership team's gonna identify options for the board to consider. And then I think it'll be important to share finances with the community and and how do we make those decisions? I think it's really important to, what is our, what's our focus behind all of it? And I think that the board is very clearly to me, as I analyze, as I came into the district and as I've been in the district. The board has prioritized, how do we provide everything possible for kids, how do we prioritize that? How do we prioritize opportunities for kids? I would recommend that that continues to be the focus, because I think that that is absolutely an important part of what we do. We're here for kids, we wanna provide them opportunities, we wanna provide them. The greatest. Staff and individuals we can to help them, which, you know, it's. I I met with the robotics folks and it's not purposeful that they're here today, but that's a great example that they are a great partner. That provides another opportunities for kids and, you know, it's something that is a district that we're looking to help invest in that. So we've talked about using space within a building to be able to help with that. And we, I think we do that a lot, you know, our kids are incredibly involved in activities and after-school events and. We know that that's really valuable and I think that that's important for us to keep a focus on as well.
That's okay, but I did wanna say just a couple of things. One, sadly. This board has been faced over the years with making some of those tough decisions multiple times. And you are correct, every time, every one of us, I work with some really good people, we have a good board. But yes, it's always, the kids come first. For those of you that may or may not remember, we've been through three performance audits for the state. The first one I wanna say was, the last one I think was two thousand twenty-two. I think the first one was like the year or two after I first got on the board. And the performance auditors come in and they spend a great deal of time here and then they make recommendations. About how you can potentially save money. And sadly. You know, the things that they would say to us that we could save money were salaries and benefits. Well, how exactly do you do that unless you cut staff? And by cutting staff, you're affecting kids. And sadly, we have had to have, had to cut staff over the years. Cut busing. Each and every one of those performance audits recommended that we cut busing. For our high school students and anyone that lives within two miles. We live in a district where there's no sidewalks to get to our schools, how safe was that gonna be? And then the last one was to cut extracurriculars or go to full aid participants. And the board chose to. Try the best we could to keep as much as we could affordable in our district for our families. So we have been making those tough decisions for a long time. I also wanted to say, we have done several community forums in the past. I am really excited about this one. Because although we have, they've been very, very few have attended our community forums in the past. I think the timing of this one and all of the drama and hubbub around the school board. Elections right now is going to get you a lot of people. And that's fantastic, because people need to hear all of this information. So that's, that's good. So thank you, I appreciate that very much.
I have a question, Steve. On your charts that you handed out on the annual revenue actual plus projected, the bar chart. The year twenty thirty, you have a figure up top of the bar that says three-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand eight-hundred-and-sixty, what does that number represent? Do you see it on the top of the bar?
I do, and I'll have to get back to you.
Okay, it's just sticking out to me.
Honestly, I did not notice that, I'm gonna find out.
Finally, the one last thing that I want, that's okay, no, that's okay, that's okay. I've been hearing a lot of stuff about grants and, you know, we do get a lot of grants. Right here, we've got anywhere from one-point-six to two-point-nine million, you know, for what? Past five years, every year type of thing, and this isn't even including all of our local grants and awards. But one thing that, that is very important that you stated is. The majority of our budget is salaries and benefits. How much of those grants can go to salaries and benefits?
Well, some of them can.
Some can, yeah, but there's restrictions on it, is there not?
Well, typically, there's, there, I mean, they're called restricted funds. And they can only be used for specific purposes. And typically, when there's a new grant opportunity out there. Who's ever giving that grant, they don't wanna pay for something we're already paying for. They wanna pay for something new, which, I mean, is nice, but it doesn't help us here.
And if we are able to get a grant for something new, which we have. But, and we have actually used some of that money for salaries and benefits. For like the first year, maybe two years. Is it correct that that you then, I mean, are they gonna give you the grant if they know you can't sustain it when that grant runs out?
There are certain, like, federal grants that. You know, we can count on being, well, up until now, we can count on being here from time to time. I don't know if there's anybody at the Federal Education Department that can, that's another story. A lot of times, you know, grants are, they wanna do some wonderful things and they do wonderful things. But a lot of times, grants run out. It could be a one-year grant, it could be a three-year grant. And great, okay, we're gonna do something new. If that money runs out, if you don't have money, what do we do with the people? If there's room in the general fund, you know, sometimes, you know, that's an option. It's not an option for us here.
But grants are really great for things like bus purchases, when we need a new bus and we can't afford a new bus or.
Capital items, one-time purchases, but typically not operating expenses.
Let me ask you, Steve, from your experience, and you've been doing this a long time, it it's been thrown out a lot lately, we don't have a grant writer. Like a person that, have you found out over the time that that is worth it, invested that person's salary? And do you get a return investment?
We, we actually, go ahead.
I didn't mean to touch you on, I was just trying to interrupt him, go ahead, sorry. Can I answer?
Yeah, go ahead, okay.
Yeah, I'm sure it's better than me.
I would go back to what I said before, you know, we've gotta make. I think the board has demonstrated what their focus is, which is how do we do everything we can for students and invest within that classroom? Dave has written grants, I've written grants, just as of this past couple of weeks, he wrote one, I wrote one.
And what were those, how much was that dollar amount for again? Both of you?
Mine's fifty-five thousand, but we would, we would pay one-fourth of that for new cameras. And we don't know if we have it or not.
Right, right, and then the other one?
I've applied for one that was.
The security one?
Or that one was one-twenty-five, but again, it's not staffing, but, but I I guess I would say, Jeff.
That's just been the big clause word around town is that we need to go hire somebody and everything and I'm like, is that some?
I was saying, Dave and I, Jen, I, you know, we have a narrow crew downtown, just as much as we have a narrow crew in every building. A lot of people do a lot to get things.
Phenomenal, we have a great.
We did have a grant writer and when I first was on the Board of Education and it was one of the ones that. We had to. Eliminate early on. And we also have contracted with someone. And I'm assuming up until last year or the year before, we still had a contract with someone that would do. But we only had to pay him if he got us a grant.
Yeah, we don't, we don't. But it it's, the thing I think that's a unique quality that I know I've seen over and over again in Madison is. You've got a lot of people that do everything they can to help and figure out a solution, I see it within the schools all the time. You know, I was thinking of our individual who's video gra, or video. Doing the video for tonight's event has offered to help with the website, you know, everybody's willing to help in different ways. And I think that's the unique quality and I would say for our district. A grant writer is not a strong investment for, the return on that investment is not the area I would wanna focus on.
There's also the opportunity, we have, we have a great opportunity in Lake County and everybody's forgetting that, we are a manufacturer capital. I mean, we have over six-hundred-plus manufacturers, many of them are small, but a lot of them are corporate headquartered here. Lou Brizol, Avery Dennison, they all have foundations, Starris Corporation has foundations. We need to get into these companies and partner and see if we can get money from their foundations to invest back into the community. I don't know of any other schools that are doing it in Lake County, as of two years ago, before I left my job, there wasn't any schools going after it. It was all nonprofits. So it's something new, it's something to think about and it's something that maybe could bring in new revenue. It could be something particular where the dollars are only for a particular initiative, but at least we could free up money with that. And have it for a general fund, that type of thing, so there is all kinds of things we can do, so it's not dire straits, I mean, it sounds like it. But there are opportunities and initiatives that we can take, that I would be really excited to help try to do that, I know some people and some companies that could, we could contact.
And you have a good background with that kind of stuff with working for the United Way. But also, Dan and Jeff, that was what they went to speak to G L Power about.
And that's Harry Allen, he was the original guy, and he is all about Madison, he's grew up, he grew up here. He helped finance Madison Country Club when we had it, he was a big name many years ago and he's still alive and it's, it's his family's company. So there's ways to get in things like that.
Yeah, and I, I think G L Power is a unique opportunity of us. Potentially with our kids being able to be exposed to that opportunity and learning a trade.
They're very community-minded, they used to be based in Mener and then they had one in Perry and they were huge for United Way, they were always doing things. So get them to love Madison, you know, wherever they're located and then we can maybe see what they can write us a check for.
We approached them. We did hit them up.
More, more than one meeting, gotta have a few.
Do you know, I have an answer for your question.
Sure.
The bar chart. In twenty twenty-nine, we have an emergency levy that's expiring. And this little amount here in fiscal thirty represents that money that would have to be.
That's why you have it sitting on top, that's at risk.
It's at risk.
Okay, thank you.
Isn't it one of the things they're talking about, changing emergency levies, getting rid of? It's not, it's set in stone right now.
Yeah, and it it would have to be, once, yeah, if if it passes, my understanding that. If you wanna replace that money, you have to put a new levy in the ballot, you can't do a renewal.
Anyone else have any questions about the five-year forecast? We already have a motion in a second, right? We just need a roll call.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Miss Hayes.
Yeah.
Mr. Horvath, yes, Mr. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yeah.
Mr. Gary's five-zero.
Will this be put on the website so that everyone can see it, because these numbers are not looking great?
Yeah.
They need to.
And and for the, and for the public, it's also on the Department of Education's website that they can see. My last item, and this will be much shorter, is we have one donation. A generous donation of two-hundred dollars from the Madison Garden Club to the Madison High School College Board, we recommend it.
I'll move, I'll sack that.
Any discussion?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madison Garden.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Miss Hayes.
Yes.
Mr. Horvath, Mr. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Kerry's five-zero, and that concludes my items.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work.
Or to the administration team, we might wanna let these robot.
I was gonna say.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I would too.
For a while.
Can we speed our time on our updates to the robotics folks to do their presentation?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yeah, they were way at the end.
All right.
The closer you guys get to Mr. Douglas, the better we'll hear. Oh, I got you. All right, so I'll start, I'm Gregory Mabe, I'm the president of N E O Youth Robotics. That's a nonprofit that we started almost four years ago to support the robotics teams here in Madison. When the robotics program initially started with A W T, which we talked, heard about earlier. Fifteen years ago, Madison was one of the founding teams and all of the teams were coached by teachers. And supported through the school throughout the years, that has dwindled away and as of right now, we have five teams. Three high school and two middle school and all five are coached by volunteers and there are no school advisors or participation in that. So that's why we broke away from the school with a nonprofit, we handle our own finances, we get our own funding. And Mr. Rambler's been very generously working with me to help us secure space, because as Mr. Thompson mentioned, we are meeting at All Pass. And it's actually four of the five teams that are meeting there, so we are very cramped for space working there. We're very grateful, because they've been a great partner and let us use that space, but we definitely could use some relocation. And the ability to have a permanent home where we can work. The, I'm gonna move, because I don't wanna be in its way, one of our high school teams, Athena, brought up their bot.
Sure, get near Mr. Douglas, now the robot gonna go.
Nice comes out.
It's not coming out. And it's not the actual weapon, the actual weapon's two and a half pounds and it's steel and it has to be inside of a whole glass cage to turn it on. So we just put.
Really?
Creed on has the big glass cage. Do you? Yes.
Yeah, by our rules, we're not allowed. Yeah, by our rules, we're not allowed to, to test the weapon unless it's in a protective case.
That makes sense.
Safety is paramount. We have not had anyone injured in the program and we're, we're trying to keep that that way. Uh, so this is one of the high school bots that she's driving around. That is the fifteen pound division.
Drive on carpet.
Yeah, the kids design and build these bots. The manufacturing, of course, a lot of that is through donations and sponsorships. But they design it, they build it, they drive it. Um, the middle school teams are three pound bots, so they are much smaller. And, I mean.
There's not much need to do it in this little bit of space.
Right, that's okay.
Doing a great job though. Doing a great job of not hitting anything.
Can you introduce, uh, our drivers here?
Uh, I'll let Mr. Winter since it's his team.
All right.
So we've got, um, oh my God, Danielle. And Morgan, and, um, they're two of our six members this year of Team Athena. I don't know, they, they do all the engineering and all the design, they work with manufacturers to develop the, many of the parts. We'd really love to work with an electric, electrical engineer at some point to figure out how to get the most juice out of our battery, but, uh, we're making some pretty good progress, so.
Danielle? What grade are you in, dear?
I'm a sophomore.
Okay, is this your second year or first year? Yeah, and do you enjoy it a lot?
Yes.
Yeah.
Really good.
But, and Morgan? What grade are you in? Since sixth grade, wow.
Yes, um, the middle school program, um, at one point was kind of shut down. Uh, we, we stepped up and took that over because it's a great feeder program for the high school team. Uh, we found that the sooner they get involved, the, the better they do, the more they love it. My team, I, I brought this to actually show Mr. Winter, but I'll show it to you guys as well. My team this year found at the competition that one of the teams is using drone motors instead of remote control car motors. They are about a quarter of the size, a quarter of the weight, which we can then put into other aspects like bigger batteries or bigger weapons. So the kids do great, they love it and we think it's a great program and we love the partnership with Madison and. Hopefully, you know, if we can get the, the space, we want to build a more permanent robotics lab. With more equipment that the kids can use, like three D printers, desktop water jets, things like that, where they can start some of their own fabrication.
How big of a space do you need? Like a bigger than this room?
Well, this room here would probably accommodate probably all five teams. Uh, a standard classroom, we felt would be like three teams.
Okay.
Um, because the, the room we have at All Pass is about this big and we have four teams. We don't all meet the same day, so, you know, we're able to balance some things that way.
Our team engineers at the library and then later in the season, we meet at my assistant coach's barn behind his house. And it's not real big, but it gets the job done.
Yeah.
Folding tables and drill presses and we get it done.
People with big buildings.
Are involved in this, you said.
So most of the teams meet, uh, two hours a week.
And then it gets more as you ramp up towards the competition.
Yeah.
How long does it take from start to finish to build one of these and get it running and get it?
I'm gonna let one of them answer. So when do we start meeting? When do we start meeting?
We started meeting a couple of weeks ago and then, um, when do we have our?
End of April.
End of April. So we, we meet from August, September, all the way through April.
So when you first meet in August, are you all getting together with nothing that looks like this? You all have the materials that still have to be cut and?
So we start in September and it depends because sometimes we can use the same. Well, not the same, but like almost the same bot design for two years. We improve on.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but then some years you have to start from scratch. Those are really complicated and difficult years for a teen, but they step up to it.
Amazing.
But we're also working with, um, the University of Akron. We have two, uh, students from the NASA Robotics Program through the University of Akron. That, um, Zoom and not Zoom, we use Teams now, um, to come into our meetings on the big TV at the library. And they kind of help, uh, with some of the CAD work and helping the kids to learn, um, the CAD work as well, which is nice.
And throughout the years, the other teams have had various help from different engineers, different companies. Uh, most recently Haiti has had, uh, an engineer from Starris helping them. I've had several engineers from my work involved. Uh, so we, we do try to, try to get the kids some support and expertise where, where they need it. But a, a lot of the kids know this stuff very well and, and do a lot of the design themselves. Uh, for example, one of the kids on my team designed the mounting bracket for this motor that we're gonna use. So he, we got the model ready and we had it printed, so the kids are doing the design, doing the building.
How much do you think it costs to, is that an open?
That, that's a, that's a loaded question because how much money you got?
Yeah.
So.
I mean, to some schools, you can really tell that they're.
Oh yeah, it's just.
Yes, and, and that's been actually a subject of contention among some teams. There was a team that got a very large donation that. Uh, the company that donated it eventually said, hey, we didn't mean to give you that much money and wanted some of it back. That wasn't one of our teams. We've never had that kind of money. Um, but what we say in general is. Um, at the middle school level, about a thousand dollars is what they need to start to finish compete. Uh, the high school level, it's between two and five thousand is what we need. To get the bot and the kids ready for competition. The, the wonderful shirts that Team Athena has every year obviously aren't free, so that, that also.
Those are some pretty cool shirts.
They are, aren't they?
Yes.
Yes.
Sometimes our budget doesn't cover it.
And. And there is no delay for participation in our program. Yes, yeah, the, the program is free for the kids. We do not charge any fees for participation. So everything's covered by sponsorships or donations.
Now, do you guys have, so when you go into a competition, do you have just the one bot or do you have a backup bot?
You're allowed to have backup parts, but you're not allowed to compete with a second fully formed robot. That would be considered cheating. So this is the same type of competition as battle bots on television, although it hasn't been on television for a few years. Very similar, they, they're allowed to have multiple robots ready to go. We are not, uh, in our settings, so.
Any of the ones that threw out the flames?
No.
No, not allowed to do that.
No, they, they got a lot of rules for, around safety, um, and that's one of them. And every year, one of the kids suggests it. Can't we have a plane throw this year? No, they have not changed the rules.
So like what, when you said that the weapons have to stay, what kind of weapons are on it?
So the one that's here, this is three D printed, so we typically try and do, um, a full three D printed. Model each year, uh, before we actually go to manufacturers to build. We want to make sure everything fits and functions. So we have that left over. I took off the regular weapon because it's sharp in and of itself. But, um, our weapon spins at about twelve to fourteen thousand rotations per minute. Um, it spins upwards and so when it hits another robot, there's lots of.
The screen thing, right? This is.
Yeah, normally it's metal, it's.
But that's the weapon?
It's, yeah, you can spin it a little bit.
And that's so that it beats the other bot?
Yeah, it smashes into them. So you, you see all the, all those grinding and some armor, armor that's from last year.
And that's where other people have been beating your bot.
Well, though, they. Really helped.
And, and those steel weapons on the front usually weigh between three and five pounds. So when he's saying it's spinning at fourteen thousand RPM, that's five pounds of steel spinning at, yeah. Which is why we can't spin it off unless it's in a safety cage.
Makes sense.
This is awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We want to thank Mr. Rambler and the board for inviting us up.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we're sorry that we took so long talking about.
It happens.
Forecast, it is important stuff.
You'll be here till tomorrow morning.
Once you get your five thousand, we need eleven million. You first, we're second.
And if you guys don't mind, we're probably gonna.
Oh yeah, for sure.
Thank you. Short break here. At least until they can get cleared out.
Yeah. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You all, thank you.
Hence the crowd. Do you want to get started or you want to wait?
Yeah, um, I'm fine either way.
Let, let's get started.
Okay. Remove the unemployment contracts.
Sure.
Okay.
I didn't know if you were gonna, a report or if that.
Um, I do not, Dan or Dave.
I've got a five second report.
Sure.
Our preschool program, we've got a number of programs that operate down there simultaneously. Right now, we have twenty six spots still available for our preschool program. So if anybody knows somebody who's considering it, or if anybody sees me talking about this, um, we would love to have you come in, talk with us. There can be financial assistance, um, in certain circumstances that could be really helpful for families. And we would love to have as many, we would love to fill our program because we do provide. The science of reading, beginning in preschool. Um, our, our teachers have been trained in that at preschool and we do a lot of pre-reading and, um, early literacy activities. That really help prepare kids for, uh, coming into kindergarten. So if anybody hears this or knows of people, please share. Um, we would love to fill these spots.
Well, I will then piggyback off of that and have a five second plug for special education and educational aids. Um, we are seeing an increase with students who have, uh, significant disabilities. And we are hiring, we have several openings for, um, classroom aides and one to one aides, so. If anybody wants to apply, please feel free. Thank you.
Okay, and then moving on to ten, uh, recommendations, employment contracts. Initially, we have the Board of Education approving the resignation of a staff member for the Science Club Advisor at high school. Two is the entering into employment contracts as follows. We have one individual as a nutrition services substitute. Another as a building substitute at the Madison Preschool Program. And another individual at the nutrition services cashier position. Then we have three individuals for substitute teachers through the E S C for this school you've used throughout the district. C is one individual on a limited supplemental contract for the district. Electromagnetic E D F position. And then. Final item is D, which is. Nine individuals at the high school level to provide credit recovery and or acceleration check-ins and supervision for Ed Mentum, which is our. Credit recovery and acceleration program. These all, these are your consideration and approval.
I'll move.
Thank you.
Any discussion? We're on number ten here.
Yeah.
Roll call please.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Miss Hayes.
You gotta give me a minute.
I'll come to you last.
Thank you.
Mr. Horvath, yes, Mr. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Kerry's five zero.
Item ten two is the resolution declaring red ribbon week. Which will see from October twenty third to October thirty first, which is presented for your consideration and approval.
I'll move, I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Miss Hayes.
Yes.
Mr. Horvath, yes, Mr. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Kerry's five zero.
Number eleven removed. Uh, number twelve is the consent calendar. Under A, it's the approval of the Washington DC trip. With student participation between four hundred ninety five and five hundred twenty five dollars per student. That number is left as a window because it depends on the number of kids that sign up for it. Um, which determines how many buses we need, which impacts that cost. B is to approve the trip to Niagara Falls for two hundred and seventeen dollars per student. C is to approve the Columbus trip for April twenty fourth. Which is again, that range, which is based on if it's. The number of buses for the trip. Um, and then C, we have a number of items that we are disposing of as they're no longer. Usable for the purpose that they were intended for. I would say that one, we have a number of old items that we do need to dispose of and it's been a. Practice that we want to reinvigorate, um, to free up space. Part of these items is helping us free up space to enable the robotics team to be able to use space. So there's a little connection to that, but I will also say, you know, as we looked at that, there was an opportunity to do it to another location. I'm very much not a big believer on moving things to eventually get rid of it. I'd rather look at getting rid of it.
Five hundred and fifty boxes of old library books?
Yes.
Good lord.
There, the, this location has been used to store a lot of things over the years as building shifts have occurred and. We have quite a bit of storage here, so we just need to go through it as, as the time permits to, to start doing. And that's something that Adam and I've talked a lot about and worked at and really identified being able to do that. We can again be good, um, stewards of the community's resources. There's no reason to hang on to stuff. If we can provide it to the others, the others, like those books. Um, while they're not books that we can use anymore, they can be sent to recycling and they can then, you know, recycle the books and do whatever. And, and then E is the service agreement with safe house preparatory. For a cost of two hundred dollars per day and those items are presented for your consideration and approval.
Could you just, um, I'm, I'm not familiar with the safe house, could you? What is safe house?
Um, it's for students who are experiencing, um, psychological. Needs. And it's there for their education.
I just didn't know.
When students are placed in residential treatment, um, the schools are mandated to pay for their educational services wherever they are.
Yeah, maybe I shouldn't ask this question, but why not? We have a lot that happens.
Um, it just depends. I think right now there may be two or three students. At this time. Um, I think it's. Everybody pretty much knows already that, um, the trips to Washington DC, Niagara Falls, all of that. Um, these dollar amounts are what the student pays or the family pays and sometimes they do some, um. Fundraising, they sell, they used to sell magazines. I don't know what kind of fundraising they do now. But I want to make sure that people also are aware that if your family cannot afford your student to go and need some assistance. That there have always been, um, booster groups and, um, like even individuals that, um, have needed some assistance. So please reach out to your building administration. If your student wants to go, you're having a difficulty with those funds.
And is there any way? I guess there's a celebration happening Friday night at the football game. Is that still going on with, uh? From the boosters?
Fireworks.
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 Oh.
Um, yeah.
Cause I want to make sure that the community knows that that is support being paid for strictly by the boosters. We're letting it happen because we've went through all the insurances and legals and stuff, but that it is not something that we are paying for at all. I just want to make sure everybody knows that.
I heard you were right.
What?
I heard you were right.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just writing that extra check, yeah, yeah.
Um, that is correct. I know the boosters are gonna share more information about that event.
Uh, I mean, I don't want to boil, but I just, since, since the board meeting before that, I don't want anybody Friday night to think we're paying for fireworks and we're saying we're going, we're gonna have difficulties this year.
No, I, I think we just. Jen and Dave and our building administrative team would, um, definitely explain to you that I'm very attentive to finances and paying for things and paying for fireworks, which again, I, I, not to keep harping on that, but I really focus on what is our purpose and what's our focus and I, I think it'll be great. I love it. I love that the boosters are doing it. I think it's phenomenal. It's just not something we can afford the financial support. Our focus is on the classroom, the students' opportunities, so. But it's gonna be really exciting and hopefully it does not rain.
Hopefully it's not a small threat, but I don't think it's.
Hopefully it's not cold too, Jane, because it's been pretty nice.
I'm gonna be there, so I better not be.
Yeah.
We have a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you.
And for Jeff to pay for fireworks.
Talk to the wife later tonight.
Any discussion?
No, thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Did we have a motion in a second?
Yes, we do.
All right. Roll call, please.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Miss Hayes.
Yes.
Mr. Horvath.
Yes.
Mr. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Kerry's five zero.
Number twelve oh-two is the approval of resolution for a payment in lieu for, um, family with a transportation of a student that is impractical, impractical for the district to transport and it's following state law of a payment in lieu for transportation.
I'm out. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Miss Hayes.
Yes.
Mr. Horvath.
Yes.
Mr. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Kerry's five zero.
We do not have a need for executive session. Is there?
No.
Motion for adjournment.
I'll move. Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Horvath. Yes. It's Sensi.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes. And adjourned.